One, two, three, four, five, six, five, six. Six was close enough. First thing on the agenda is Commissioner Deeds for Mary Ann Brooks for 422 Sunlet Tier, Utica, New York, 13502. Any questions, any problems? None? Another Commissioner Deeds for Valerie Jean Keeler, 2807 Libria Place, Utica, New York, 13501.
Libra.
What is it?
Libra.
What did I say, Libria?
You said SpaghettiOs.
SpaghettiOs. Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Okay. The next one's sponsored by Councilmember Cosmo Testa, would you like to talk about this?
Yeah, so the reason that these pieces are coming in front of us is that, I think it was back in 2019, maybe 2020, signs were put up in these areas and legislation was never passed. So we went to go do enforcement, unfortunately, we couldn't until we get these pieces passed. So that's all it is, is...
These are the ones around the school, right?
Yes, yeah. And I don't know, I don't know maybe if some way somehow...
Well, I put them up, but they should have been legislated.
Because you would have never, the way the process goes, so either somebody didn't sign anything or somebody didn't file, not that, I don't, I don't know what happened. It could have just been a... The only other thing that I could think of is maybe during the time that we had that grant, that, what was the gentleman's name that retired from the police department? That got the school grant? You actually honored him when he was here. Uraniac, Sergeant Uraniac, actually came in and he did a formal presentation to the common council and he got a grant for the street placement of signs and he did all that, making sure there was crosswalks there.
There were certain schools that got them and a lot of schools that didn't get it.
There were certain schools that got that. So the only thing that I'm thinking is maybe through that grant, when they actually finished that grant, that it just got missed in place of how it got legislated through what Sergeant Uraniac did to the school system. So really not a big deal, just, just got to finalize it to make sure that we have it on the books.
Next, the other one too?
Yep, those are, those are those two. And like I said, Mark, it could have, it could have been through a grant or something like that, that, you know, somebody thought that they had the authority to do and it wasn't, it wasn't any ill intention, I know that.
No, we know, I know where they are. A new sign in a new location always comes through the council.
Always, so anytime...
The past that gets sent down.
The reason, what ended up happening years ago was that the common council would just put up signage, right? And then there would be no legislation. So the police department would go enforce it, everything would go to the wayside because somebody would go for a parking ticket or a traffic violation and there was no legislation to coincide with that. We ended up switching the rules of order so that any piece of legislation that had to be passed in regards to a traffic component, had to go through the police department. The police department, whether it was something simple as a stop sign, something simple as a traffic sign, it would go through them, they would do that, they put it in their RMS system. So the RMS system actually had this, like I said, and that's why I think it went through like the grant process of them going through and making sure that, you know, yeah, that happened. So it could have been a discussion through the school district, I don't know what happened because the RMS system finished that, they already did the traffic study, they knew that the signs were supposed to be there. To remediate the situation, they want to make sure that it's there. And that's our follow-up to make sure it's on the books. Okay?
We're going to hold off on the next one. There's an error on the, uh, print, it's not five thousand, it's five million. So we'll wait until he makes the correction and we'll go back to that.
Well, I got to be honest with you, this is something that I think from the Capitol's office, if I heard it correctly, um, in his statement that he made online, is that this is just in case the city needs to borrow it. Our budget deadline isn't until March. So automatically, the only thing that I'm going to ask is that we put this in committee because I don't want to borrow money in the anticipation that we don't need it. So either way, this has to go in the committee.
Yeah, we're just, let's get the right page. Are you redoing it now?
Yeah, just redo that and then you just submit it as a new piece on the board.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and then we put it in the committee.
Okay, perfect.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
So if you want to make any limitations, five million.
Yeah, well, it says five million.
The next piece is a Commissioner Deeds for Mary E. Finnegan, 24 Danbury Road, New Hartford, New York, 13413. She's a county employee. Any questions, any problems?
No, the only thing I'm going to say is that when we do the Commissioner Deeds, we do them in the block.
Yeah.
We're going to do that tonight.
All right.
Well, we've got another Commissioner Deeds for Sadie, Sadie Landron, 5 Victory Parkway, Whitesboro, New York, 13492. She's another county employee. Any questions or problems? Well, another Commissioner Deeds, Angela Tiffany 406 Lonchman.
Lonchman.
What is it?
Lonchman.
Thank you. Utica, New York, 13502. Another county employee. Well, another Commissioner Deeds, Tanya, Tina, Tina Yeti, 1511 Gibson Road, Utica, New York, 13501. Another county employee. The next piece is a local law authorizing the property of tax levy and access of the established and general municipal law. I'm not familiar with this.
Councilmember, Councilmember, Mr.? The only reason why that this is here is if the common council gets the budget and they decide to override the tax levy, it is a local law and it has to lay on the table. So the only thing that what this introductory local law does, it still needs a super majority in order to pass, is that we just lay it on the table and give the council the opportunity before their next meeting if they decide they want to pass it or not.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So we have to lay it on the table. But the other one was the five million dollars and that's got to go in the committee.
Okay, any other questions, anything to call out of committee?
No, you want to do it to the local law.
If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yep, motion to adjourn.
Second? Thank you.
We'll come to order. The city clerk will call the roll.
Ayello, Burmester, Bittar, Carcone, Urban, Beatrice Williamson, Klassimo Testa, Lamedico, Geruzzi all present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence for deceased members of the county council.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion in a second to dispense the reading of minutes from the previous meeting? Yep, there's no, um, no one has signed up for public comment period. Um, we don't have any guest speakers. Um, we're gonna go right to, um, report of city officers. So we'll start with, um, Fire Chief Angersall.
Uh, no, I've had several fires over the last week. Again, um, one civilian injury. Uh, it suffered a serious, uh, burn injuries, uh, from, uh, cooking grease on the stove. So, uh, it was a stove top fire that spread after he tried to extinguish it, put it in the sink. So, again, we try to remind people that, uh, you know, keep a fire extinguisher handy and, uh, please call nine one one early. Don't delay that notification because, uh, leads to a worse outcome. Uh, the other thing is, is I, uh, many of us have read, uh, the crew of Truck One last Friday morning intervened, had a pretty serious situation on Grant Street. And, uh, those guys, uh, they really stepped up and, um, made a difference for that person that day and, uh, really assisted. And, uh, it was Captain Joseph Alanta, firefighter Ryan Hogan, firefighter Matt Bonshahn. So, uh, we will be giving them commendations at some point in the future.
Chief, I would like to honor that at the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. City engineer, Nick Breidenbecker.
Uh, nothing to report.
Our new commissioner of the DPW, Mark Sokolowski.
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you to everybody that reached out to me with my new position. And like I did the last three administrations in this administration, my phone is always on, my door is always open, and I'm gonna work what I can do, do what I can do to keep the city going. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy chief, Noonan.
Nothing to report.
Chief Gentao.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Brian Thomas, Irving Reno.
Nothing to report.
Stephanie DeDorjeo, Corporation Council.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner of Code, Marcus Phillips.
Just shovel your sidewalks. Um, it does, it, it's people with disabilities and it doesn't only make it harder for people walking, trying to transport themselves through the neighborhoods, but also first responders. Um, you never know when you're gonna have an emergency. So shovel your sidewalks. That's all.
Thank you. Um, there's no cash report, petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. First District Council member, Katie Iow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm all set tonight.
Thank you. Um, Second District Council member and majority leader, Robert Burmester.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna mention that we, we got our West Side meeting next Wednesday at six o'clock at Five Points. Love to see you there. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you. Third District Council member and pro, um, president pro temp, Joseph Bittar.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Fourth District Council member, Frank Carcone.
I'm all set.
Fifth District Council member, Venice Urban.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Our, um, neighborhood meeting is on next Tuesday, two eleven. Um, I wanna thank Mark. Um, I always mess his name up, Sokolowski, for getting the signs up so quick. He got them up so quick, they wasn't ready to un- unleash them yet. So I went over and ripped it down anyway. So, everybody's happy about that. So thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Um, Sixth District Council member, Joseph Beatrice.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just wanna reiterate, uh, on the fire chief, I've been following that right along. You guys have been very busy. They did a great job and, uh, thank you for all you do. Um, I thought, I also wanna personally congratulate, uh, Mark Sokolowski and his team, Pat and the crew. They've done a wonderful job in the Parks Department all this year. Um, stepped up very, very much. Anything I ever needed, they're always there for me. And I'm sure you will take this, um, new position and do a great job there. And I also wanna wish, um, Dave Short the best of luck. I know he's going back into a department that he's very familiar with, and I'm sure he will continue to do a great job and move our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Um, council member at large and minority leader, Mark Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with Mr. Beatrice. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council member at large, Samantha Klassimo Testa.
Thank you. And it's Klassimo. I've known you for like twenty years now, you know? Um, the first thing, I, I, I have to agree with Commissioner of Codes, Marcus Phillips. I see a number of people in the roads because sidewalks are not clear. And it's a, it's, it's gonna get to the point where somebody's gonna end up getting injured because they're in a, they're either in a wheelchair or, you know, some type of disability to have them, you know, need the sidewalk to actually get by. So, I couldn't agree with you more and I, I hope that people do continue to clear their sidewalks knowing that we have a storm coming in the next, um... do continue to clear their sidewalks, knowing that we have a storm coming in the next, the next week. The other thing I would like to congratulate, Commissioner of DPW now, Mark Sokolowski, congratulations, Mark. It's a well-deserved position after being in DPW for over 20 years. And like Joe said, and like Mark said, I wish Dave Short the best of luck in his new position at the Parks Department. One last thing, I'd like to wish my mother a very happy 59th birthday. The only way I remember her birthday is it's the same year as the Super Bowl. So best of, best of luck to the Philadelphia Eagles, and I hope they kick the Kansas City Chief's butts. But happy birthday to my mother. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member at large, Jack Lamedico.
I'd like to congratulate Mark. Good luck in, in your new position. And Marcus, I never say anything about you, but you do a great job too. So keep it up. Because I never, you know, we don't, we really don't talk about the great job you do.
I agree.
And so, thank you.
All shots.
And everybody else too, so.
Right.
Mr. President, I just want to say one thing. So the other night, I should have said this.
I don't have orders.
I know. Can I have?
Yes.
So I just want to say one thing regarding the sidewalks, and you're 100% right. The other night, I had a ride with my daughter and my grandson up Mohawks to Parkway Drugs in East Utica. And it was dark, it was raining, that rainy night. And I actually called Marcus at seven o'clock and said, man, not for nothing, there was, you can't even, like in North Utica, we don't have sidewalks for the most part. Herkimer Road and some, you know, it's some. But going up Albany Street, I'm not even, I'm not kidding you, there had to be 15 or 20 people all dressed in dark clothes walking in the streets. And, you know, we had a discussion about it. And, you know, part, lot of, lot of it is, a lot of the houses are vacant up on that one block, you know, right above where we go with the Ambassador up there. But it was, it was actually scary. Between her driving and me sitting in the passenger seat, I'm like, holy cow. I'm surprised, all it's going to take is one person to get hit, and we're going to be liable for it in the city. So I didn't mean no, but that's right. Thank you.
I'd just like to point out, Joe says seven o'clock. It's more like nine o'clock. If you don't get a call from Joe Beatrice at nine o'clock on a Tuesday, you're not doing your job.
Thank you. Judge?
I'd like to, I already told Mark I was very happy on his, hear of his appointment. And over the years, I had many occasions to call upon his services. He never said no, ever. And one of them was very personal, putting my brother's pictures who were for World War II right near my home. He did that specifically because he knew it meant a great deal to me. He didn't have to do that, but he did it. And he's the kind of guy that he goes above and beyond what his job does. He's, he's a good human being. And when we were doing something at the golf course, he took that in hand and he did all that work himself. And I really made a gentleman up there very happy, made me very happy that we got that all done secretly.
Yes.
That was another great thing. So the city of Utica is in good hands with you at the Department of Public Works. And I congratulate you. Thank you.
Thank you, judge. Commissioner of deeds, can I have a motion to introduce proposed resolution number 1, 2, 6, 7, 8, and 9? We'll do it as a group.
Second.
Second. Okay. So Commissioner of deeds, be it resolved at the common council, hereby approve the following persons eligible for appointment to Commissioner of deeds for the city of Utica, New York, within the two-year term ending December 31st, 2026. We have Mary Ann Brooks, 422 Sunlight Terrace, Utica, New York, 13502. Valerie Jean Keeler, 2807 Libel Place, Utica, New York, 13501. Mary E. Finnegan, 24 Danbury Road, New Hartford, New York, 13413, county employee. Sadie Langdon, 5 Victory Parkway, Whitesboro, New York, 13492, county employee. Angela Tiffany, 406 Large Mount Ave, Utica, New York, county employee. And Tina Yeady, 1511 Gibson Road, Utica, New York, county employee. Can I have your votes, please?
Nine yeas adopted.
Can I have a motion to introduce proposed ordinance number three?
Motion.
Second. Okay. Be it ordained, section 216, 361, scheduled F, no parking during certain hours, Hollingsworth Ave, north and south between Wetmore Street, Albany Street, on school days from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This survey was completed 2017, 2018. The following proposed legislation was presented, however, is not on the books at the city clerk's office. Votes, please.
Nine yeas adopted.
Can I have a motion to introduce proposed ordinance number four?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Be ordained, section 216, 375, scheduled T, stopping and standing prohibited, Hollingsworth Ave, north and south between Wetmore Street, Albany Street, on school days from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Votes, please.
Nine yeas adopted.
Can I have a motion to introduce proposed resolution number five?
Motion.
Mr. President, just for the clarification of the record, that it's the original, the original resolution that we received said 5,000. We just want to make sure that the record states for 5 million.
Yep. A resolution authorizing the issuance of up to $5 million in revenue anticipation notes of the city of Utica, Anita County, New York, in anticipation of the receipt of certain revenue due during the fiscal year ending March 31st, 2025. Votes, please.
Commit.
Motion. Do you want to commit?
Second.
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 Commit.
No.
I'd like to make a motion to lay it on the table.
Second, a local law authorizing a property tax levy in the excess of the limit established in the general municipal law, section 3C.
Got to read it.
Okay. Be it enacted by the common council for the city of Utica, section one legislative intent, is the intent of the local law to allow the city of Utica to adopt a budget for the next fiscal year that requires a real property tax levy in the excess of the tax levy limit and defined by general municipal law, section 3C. Section two authority, this local law is adopted pursuant to the subdivision five of the general municipal law, section 3C, which expressly authorizes a local government governing body to override the property tax cap for the coming fiscal year by the adoption of the local law approved by the vote of 60% of said governing body. Section three, tax levy limit override, the city of Utica is hereby authorized to adopt or implement a budget pursuant to the law for the fiscal year commencing April 1st, 2018, that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed by the general municipal law, section 3C. Section four, subrogability, if a court determines that any clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or a part of this local law, or the application thereof to any person, firm, or corporation, or circumstance is invalid or unconstitutional, the court's order or judgment shall not affect the impair or invalidate the remainder of this local law, but shall be confined in its operation to the clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law, or the application to the person, individual, firm, or corporation, or circumstance directly involved in the controversy in which such judgment or order should be rendered. Section five, effective date, this local law should be operative for the fiscal year commencing April 1st, 2025. Votes to lay on the table?
Nine yeas to lay on the table.
Mr. President, one more thing before we conclude the meeting tonight. From what I'm told, we're supposed to get our budget presentation tomorrow at 3:30 at E&amp;A. With that said, our following meeting for our regular scheduled meeting is the 19th. In order for council members to prepare their budget amendments, I would like to call for a meeting on Monday the 24th, Tuesday the 25th, for a committee meeting, and Wednesday the 26th, and then also for a special meeting, all those at 5:00. And then with a special meeting on that Wednesday at 5:30 to introduce any of those amendments. So to reiterate, it would be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the February 24th, 25th, and 26th, a committee of the whole meeting. And then Wednesday, the 26th at 5:30, a special meeting to introduce those amendments.
Is everybody good with those things? All right.
I mean, just to schedule them, we could get all the meeting, we can get all our budget amendments done on that Monday, maybe not have a Wednesday committee meeting, or have that Tuesday committee meeting. Just to schedule ahead of time, just to make sure that we know when our dates are, when we have to present the budget amendments. That way we have a special meeting. Because if we get the budget tomorrow, it's actually earlier than we've normally received the budget, because it's usually done by February 20th. Once we get it tomorrow, we'll then have until that last meeting in March to finalize everything that we need.
I don't think we're getting it tomorrow. I think it's being presented to E&amp;A tomorrow.
Right. But that's what I'm saying. So we'll still have between our next meeting.
We'll be able to look at what's being presented at that point.
I would hope, I would hope that if E&amp;A got the budget tomorrow, that we would receive it by the 24th of February, because we're supposed to get it by the 20th.
No, sure. I'm just saying, well, what's presented tomorrow, though, won't be finalized for our review.
What do you mean? If the, if the E&amp;A passes it tomorrow, then it'll go to the common council.
Do we anticipate it'll be passed tomorrow?
I don't know. But just to schedule ahead of time. So we're not waiting till our February 19th meeting. I would hope so, yeah. I hope E&amp;A doesn't hold on the budget for 20 days and that the common council can go with it.
The point is, things can obviously change. What's presented tomorrow might not be finalized in what we receive on the 20th.
The only way that it'll be finalized is if somebody from E&amp;A has a budget amendment.
No, sure. But it's not going to be finalized. There's a potential for it not to be finalized. It's just the point.
What do you mean? What do you mean, Joe?
I guess the point is, it's not being presented to us tomorrow. We're obviously going to be able to
Oh, 100%. I understand the process of the board of E&amp;A.
See it and start it. It started early on, but it won't be finalized potentially in what we receive.
Only until the board of E&amp;A sends it to the common council.
Finalizes it. As a final package. Right. Just want to clarify.
Which, once they pass it to us, I hope we get it by the 20th, which is the deadline for them to pass it to us.
How long are we going to get the votes, Daniel?
I would hope as soon as E&amp;A passes it. The sooner they keep it, the sooner it comes to us.
Usually, they're putting them together now, so.
Yeah.
They'll let me know.
So we'll get it by the 24th of February. Yeah, exactly. Exactly. That's what I'm saying, to at least, to at least give us a couple of days. So that's why the 24th puts us in that safe range.
When do you think we might get the votes?
Whenever E&amp;A passes.
Well, we have to pass it. So we'll see tomorrow.
And then they'll bring it down to me and let you know that they're handling it.
Either way, we've got to tentatively schedule a meeting by the 24th.
Yeah, it's tentative. Yeah. So it's not written in stone. So we're just putting the dates out there.
Just putting the date out so that everybody knows and the public knows.
It's funny.
Right.
The date you requested.
It'll probably be passed by February 11th at our next meeting.
Right. So by the 24th, which gives us more than enough time. Okay? Does that make sense? Everybody good?
Yep.
All right, great.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Tomorrow.